I'm asking for wisdom and guidance for each of our men and women that are elected officials or Miss Manager. I thank you, God, for this opportunity, Lord, to bring economic development, to bring leadership to our community. We're asking for blessing upon each and every one of us here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Who called this meeting to order at 6:01 PM? Real call.
Mayor Hicks.
Goodness.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Bassett.
Here.
Councilor Rosero.
Here.
Councilor Higidia.
Let the record show that Councilman Boney has out tonight's seat. If you'd please stand and join me in the presence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah! You need to make that a correction to the agenda, number one charter compliance. Everything else goes down to three, four, five, six, and seven. And the panel will entertain a motion to a two for. Please turn. How many committees would you do? Second. That's enough. Councilor Woskis. Councilor Musser. Yes. Citizens to address the council, has anybody signed up out there? Hey! Good to see you back. Go ahead, stand up here and give us a spiel. How do you say your last name?
Alguirino.
Alguirino.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. My wife and I have moved to Grants from overseas, from an area that was very crowded, very polluted, and we were looking forward to a very quiet, smaller town experience. And...
Did you break it, Chris?
(inaudible).
As I was saying, we're looking forward to a more quiet, peaceful town experience, small-town experience. And we have been walking quite a bit in various parts of Grants because we enjoy it. And I have noticed the propensity that borders on insanity for residents or possibly transients who would basically turn Route 66, a Santa Fe Avenue, into a speed track, drag strip, you know, whatever. And I was just curious if there's anything that the city is currently doing, the police, anything doing, to address that, what I consider to be reckless behavior.
On Santa Fe Avenue?
Not everyone, yes, yes, yes. I mean, people that are basically, you know, they have, we call them muscle cars, for lack of a better word.
Yeah. Muscle trucks.
Muscle trucks, muscle cars, and they, they basically flaunt not only the noise of their mufflers, which is irritating enough, but that's a different issue, but the fact that they can go, I guess, zero to 50 in under three seconds. And, you know, that's basically the problem. As far as I can see, the quality of life is, is fine, it's just that too many people are showing off as far as their vehicular potential. So I was just curious if there's anything that can be done.
We're in the process of trying to slow the traffic down on Santa Fe Avenue, all the way with speed limits and not with, with the state highway department. But Chief, would you care to address that?
I bet you, Your Honor.
That's why we got him here.
So, um, thank you for coming, because I've been, I've been chief now for a year and a half, and we're really doing push towards community-oriented policing. One of the things we're doing is we're utilizing several different grants for overtime for our traffic enforcement. Through a county grant, which we just got through using here at the end of last year, using up that as much as possible, officers were putting just lots of tickets, lots of citations. And now we're going to be using our state grant for that. Other than that, we have 12-hour shifts. Our 12, 12 noon to 12 a.m. guy is our traffic guy. So I'm going to tell the guys major on Santa Fe Avenue or some more. I know we do a lot of traffic stops there, also in Roosevelt, also on First Street. We just get a lot of that. But no, we are definitely, definitely addressing traffic issues.
May I make one comment? There are no crosswalks, extended intersections.
We're working on that, yeah, we're working on that pretty much. That's why we want to slow the traffic down to like 25 miles an hour. We want to be able to park the cars on the street like this with only one lane of traffic. There's a lot of things we're trying to do here, but it's a fight with the state.
Right, I understand.
Because there's no way across unless you go down to a crosswalk.
Right.
And people aren't going to do that. My employees run across the street right here, okay? So yeah, we're working on it. It's, it's a, I mean, believe it or not, it's such a process. We've been on it for how long now, Laura? Two years, three years?
Three years.
Three years. And it's just a fight with the state because the state doesn't like to change anything. Okay? But we are working on it, and we appreciate you addressing it. The next time I have a meeting with the state, I will call you so you can come and do that after, Laura. Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Peterson.
Oh, yes.
Good to see you again.
Yes.
Now, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to tell everyone that when I drove into town about a week ago on a Friday afternoon and came down to Santa Fe, there were two people that had their cameras out, big smiles on their faces, and they were rushing to every single one of the basket displays, taking pictures madly and laughing and smiling and pointing, and I thought, yeah, they're a good thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Our blessing.
Thank you very much for permitting me to speak this evening. I agree with the two previous speakers. We have a business on, on First Street, and those cars coming down First Street hit that hill and come zooming down. And so, and I think that someone had told me that possibly when they get off from work, they try to race each other to various parts of town, and the...
Well, you said when they get off work?
Right.
We may not have that problem much longer.
Well, maybe they'll go to another city. And then the, the native baskets, a lot of people, especially during the warmer months, they are out there taking pictures with the baskets all the time. But that's not the reason that I wanted to speak to you this evening. I serve on the animal care board, and there is a lady that has been serving our community for years without any recognition, and that's Carolyn Newton. I had the privilege of, of going on a transport a week ago Monday, and we transported 79 dogs, mama dogs and puppies, to Arizona. The truck, it was all done, she layered various cages in the truck. We looked like the Grapes of Wrath going down the highway. And at the last minute, the group in Arizona said, we'll take those larger dogs too. Well, we already have the truck, the back of the truck filled up, so guess where those dogs rode? In the cab of the truck. So that was interesting, it was a lot of fun, and there were two groups from Arizona that met us there. Now Carolyn has been doing this even before our new animal care center was built on Sacolera. She's been doing it for years without any recognition, without any compensation, she just does it. We have some other people that are interested in doing this as well, and I understand there's someone that lives at Timberlake that has a, a bus that he's converting so that all of these crates could fit into the bus. He doesn't even live in our county. And without these people helping the animal care board or the animal care center, we would be in very serious straits. I just wanted to bring that to your attention and give recognition to someone that has served our community, and she does not want recognition, but I could not stay quiet. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk? Go ahead, Chris.
Hey, I just want to say one thing about animal care.
Step up, Chris, step up, come on. I can't hear you. Get up here to the mic.
I'm loud.
You ain't loud enough.
We haven't, you just turned me over there. We have a, we have a new program at Animal Care, and so all of our available animals are listed on podango.com, and you can go to our website and click on the button, and it takes you directly to Podango. And so people nationwide can see our animals now. So hopefully we'll empty the kennel this morning. We actually got a Facebook post from some people in Florida interested in some of our dogs.
Cool.
So...
These killing them?
Yep.
These putting them down. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, discussion number one, I'm really happy with this one, charter compliance. I'm proud to announce we're finally in compliance with the charter since we did the amendment last week. Next one, approval of the regular city minutes. Anybody see any corrections? If not, I entertain a motion.
Any commotion, Your Honor?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Woskis?
Yes.
Councilor Musser?
Cool.
Approval of the special city council minutes. That one, that was very quick.
I'd like to approve the special meeting minutes.
Yes, second.
Councilor Reynolds, yes. Councilor Woskis?
Yes.
Councilor Musser?
Yes.
American Legion Auxiliary Centennial Day Proclamation. Is there anybody here from the Legion?
There is none, I don't believe.
Um, I believe this is the one they brought to my house to sign for them a couple of months ago. I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record anyway. American Legion Auxiliary Centennial Day Proclamation. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 as a wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of care for veterans, national security, Americanism, and children and youth. And whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideas, the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary was also founded in 1919 to support the American Legion and honor the sacrifice of those who served by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families, both at home and abroad. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary is celebrating its centennial in 2019, 2020. Now therefore, I, Martin Hicks, Mayor of the City of France and Mexico, do hereby proclaim November 10th, 2019 as American Legion Centennial Day. Witness thereof. Blase, blase. Yeah, they brought this to me back in November. I was hunting them, so they didn't make the, yeah, I signed them a copy so they could have their thing at the Legion, and I just wanted to read that into the record tonight, okay? Resolution for budgeting, beginning cash balances for fiscal year 20. There she is! What's happening?
Nothing. So Jeanette and I went back and forth about the order to put these in the paper. The problem is they all are intertwined, so, um, probably the first thing to just look at is just the, the one that says a report recap that looks like this. That's basically our year-to-date or, uh, year-to-date year of December 31st numbers. Um, nothing really, too much stands out other than our expenditures are quite a bit in a couple of different areas, a couple of different departments. If you look at the second attachment, it's something new. It's called an income statement, and, um, I thought I would try this this time for you guys, see if it might be easier to read than that really long thing that I cut and paced last quarter, I don't know if you remember that or not, from the state.
Try not to.
Um, this just breaks down, you know, I highlighted the, the top columns, it just breaks down, the fund is on the left side, and then under each fund, it's the revenue and expenses. And so then it's the budget, um, and then the next column that's most important is the one that says White TD Activity, Year-to-Date Activity through December 31st, and then the budget remaining and a percentage, because I'm a percentage person. Um, you know, theoretically, everything should be at 50% as of December 31st. We should have 50% of our expenditures expended, we should have 50% of our income received. The ideal situation, of course, is that our revenue is less than that so that we have more left, and our expenses are more than that as far as what's remaining so that that means we haven't spent all of it. Some funds, like the general fund, you know, is pretty even, 48% revenue is remaining, 54% expenditure, so that's a good thing. Corrections, you know, they're an issue that we're going to have to address. We've gotten 84% of, uh, we've gotten, there's 84% of our revenue left, which means we've only gotten 60% of our revenue for the year of what we budgeted. My concern is, is that, are we going to even get that? Yet we've spent, um, we only have 10% left in expenditures, which means we've spent 90% of our expenditures already. We've spent $137,000 on our prisoners. So again, are we going to get the revenue that we budgeted, and then are we going to, are those expenditures for the prisoners going to continue going up?
You can bet on that.
Yeah. So that, that's a real, that's a real concern, and those are big numbers.
Those are huge.
Um, the municipal tax fund 21600 is another one that I would caution you guys to look at. Um, our revenue, we've got 44% left of our revenue, which we've, we received a lot of the revenue, which that's a good thing. But our expenses are at 40%, which means we only have 40%, we only have 40% left. Kind of figure out a better way to do this report, I think, but, so we've spent 60% of our expenses already in this fund, and we're at 50% of the year. So we're getting the money in, but we're also spending really quick, and I realize that's roads and stuff, but just something for you guys to, to be aware of. Um, those are the elements that really jump out at me. Capital projects, which is on the second page, which is Fund 39900. Um, you know, we've gotten, we've only gotten about, what, 24% of our revenue in? So here again, kind of back to the corrections, are we not going to get that revenue? I don't know. Um, we're not spending that, all of it either though, because we've got 79% of our expense budget left, so that's a good thing too. Um, that's not really a concern, it's just, I don't know if, I don't know if we...
She's giving eye on us.
Yeah, we just, we just need to, and you know, I mean, everybody knows what's going on here, or, you guys all saw the grocery receipts report that I put in your boxes this week. You know, one of our biggest grocery receipts months since I've been here, $715,000. It's December, right? Or was it November? No, it's, no, it's October, actually. It's October's, it's November's, uh, we earned it in November, but they dispersed it in December, we get it in January. I don't know why they called December the disbursement month, but yes, it would have been November's money.
It's hunting month.
So, and what's interesting about that too, when I was doing the journal entry for that, our, our interest that we get every month, which is somewhere around $800, $900, was all negative, and I'm like, what in the world? So I went back and looked, no, I'm not crazy, so I called the state. They called me this afternoon. Um, apparently somebody who pays GRT in, in our county and city either had an audit or had an overcharge, so they had to pay the money back. And I said, well, can you tell us how much that was? And, and, well, no, we just know that it's kind of what's going to happen. And I said, well, you know somebody owes you money, and so you pull back our interest to pay that, but you can't tell me how much it is or who it was, is it going to happen again next month? So, and, so I had her send me an email.
Same crap.
Well, and I had her send me an email so I can put it with the journal entry, because sure as heck, you know, those auditors are going to pull that journal entry, and why is their $900 not there? So I just had the email attached to the journal entry, but anyways.
We had a big pullback.
Big one.
Yeah, right before I started.
Right before I started. I went, I had to do this confidential training and go look at the records. Well, after I did that, suddenly we got all that money back.
Right, right. So yeah, it's only $900, you know, interest, but still, $900 is $900, and so...
We're not making too much.
So the, the last part I wanted to, to share with you and then have questions. So whenever I, I put the first quarter report in, the feedback that I get from the state was the general fund account, or the general fund, the corrections fund, the lodgers tax fund, the municipal street fund, and the solid waste fund expenditures all exceed revenues within the first quarter. Please be aware that this trend does not continue. So that's something to keep in mind, they, you know, they want us to be spending money as we're getting it, not hoping for it to come at a later point, so I don't want to get that nasty ground this quarter, this next quarter, but I probably will, because there's, I think there's three funds that are like that.
Any questions? Excuse me? Lanny? Rick? No?
So, so one more, a couple more things. So I give the second, the second, um, report, the, this income statement, I give a report that's similar to this, it's just more detailed, it has every account listed. I give that to Laura and to the department heads every month. So my question to you is, is any of this stuff helpful? Do you want it more often than once a quarter? Um, are we good with how we are? I just thought I would open that up, because it seems like I'm here, you know, four times a year, and if you want this stuff more, I can give you what I give the department heads and Laura, or what, any thoughts?
Are you good once a quarter?
You shouldn't have.
No, it's a new answer.
Are you good once a quarter? I haven't had a problem with it at all.
Okay.
I mean, and I review it.
Okay.
I mean...
Okay, just wanted to make sure that you guys are getting what you need from it.
Unless you want to come here more often, I like seeing you smile a face, you know? But if I got any questions, believe me, I know where to go.
I know, I know. So, so then the next question, the next thing I want to discuss is the resolution 1659. So we, you've never seen one like this before, I don't think, ever here.
Yeah, never have.
So the, where this came from is, we got our audit turned in on time, December 16th, for the first time in a long time, and it's accurate, which is even the bigger issue.
Holy, yeah, my day!
And so what these numbers are, are a reflection of the audit, getting our cash balances, continuing to get them straight. You know, remember whenever I presented the fiscal year 20 budget to you, I told you guys the cash was wrong? We knew that. Um, we were trying to be conservative and kind of go with what the statement said, and as it turns out, we're only about $600,000 off. And to me, that's really good, because it, you know, it could have been a whole lot more. And really, we're not really off $600 as much as, that could be stuff that's outstanding as of June 30th of last year when the audit closes. And so all of these adjustments are just getting the cash where it needs to be in the right account so that we don't have negative fund balances, and so that we have the right amounts. Um, so that's what the purpose of this resolution is, we have to approve that first before we can approve the second one, so I just wanted to explain that. And I'll quit, I'll quit talking.
You're all right. We've got to have them, we've got to have them to go to the state.
And so what they do is they make it, you know how on the, on the first page, the, the one that I give you guys every month, this one? So at the end, you can have negative balances there, okay? And normally what I do is I just transfer money from one fund to the other to cover, you know, like to the seniors or whatever, although knock on wood, the seniors hasn't even, I haven't even had to transfer any money there this year. And so what this is going to do is these corrections are going to fix our, our balances too, so we don't have to transfer as much money, because the money's being correctly targeted where it needs to be. Correctly shown, not targeted, that's not a good word.
I'll entertain a motion on...
May I ask a question, please?
You bet you can, Mrs. Peterson, step up to the mic.
One time you said $600, but the first time you said $600,000.
$600,000. $600,000.
Okay, okay, thank you.
She, she talks...
I talk super fast, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
She, how do you say, she gets into that accounting jargon where 600?
God.
Yeah, 600...
I'm still adjusting to that too, Mrs. Peterson.
600,000.
But we're dealing with 20, a budget of $27 million, you know, so...
Right. And quite honestly, our, our accounts payable runs are somewhere between, somewhere around, they average about $500,000 a week. So the very last week of June, we had an accounts payable run of whatever it was, around $500,000, so none of those, most of those checks hadn't cleared by June 30th, and that accounts for most of what the adjustments are from.
I was just concerned about the number of...
Yep, 600, five zeros.
Thank you.
On that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 201659.
I'd like to approve the resolution 201659.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Woskis?
Yes.
Councilor Musser?
Yes.
Next.
In your packet you have, um, the Jacobs contract...
Wait, there's one more, there's one more.
Sorry, there were a little more.
There's one more, you have to approve the second quarter adjustments, which is where, um, so I don't know if you remember, but about halfway through last year, we figured out that, just when I, because when I transfer money, I don't have to get your opinion, I mean, I don't have to get your approval, because we've already approved it in the budget, but if we go over the amount we approved in the budget. So the first one's a correction, so I, we transferred more money than $5,000, but we're just $5,000 over what we budgeted to transfer. And then for the municipal street, we transferred $120,000 in there, and then our expenditures were over budgeted $12,000 in the correction fund. So those will be, that'll probably be the same, I'll, we'll probably have that for the next quarters too.
Maybe it's time to have a conversation with your...
So...
Yeah, I...
Might be time to have a conversation with her. Remember when she ordered it, and they were charging us on that?
But I...
It's highly possible that's happening again.
Yeah, she, she watches pretty closely, in fact, we just got a few ambulance bills that she, she and I reviewed, whether or not they were justified, but...
Dang it!
She watches pretty closely. I'll have to see, we, we've changed what we're channeling...
Is that for the year, $12,000? It's what we're over for the year?
We're over, yeah, so, so we've spent, um, let's see...
We budgeted how much for that?
We've spent $137,000 so far, so we budgeted $125,000. That's all we've budgeted, and we're halfway through the year, I mean, we're going to, we're already going to budget easily.
And I think we should go back and look at what our past expenditures were, because I think typically we have spent like $150,000, so possibly we should have budgeted more in that line item. One year, we didn't have quite as many, I remember, it was like six months before we were billed by the county because they were in a big transition, and so part of it fell over in a different year, I believe. So that might be why, why it looks like a lot right now, but I, I think we can go back and look at what passed. And then you've kind of changed what stuff came out of, because corrections fund, um, I know there's a fund that the judge brings in money for fines and stuff, so...
And that's, and part of that still does go in there, but it's, it's very, very small number.
Right.
Very, very small number.
And we used to bring in a lot more.
It's decreased a lot.
Last year, that, that amount coming in has really decreased.
Right, for fines, for DUI tests, for lab tests, for educate, you know, DUI education, all kinds of things, those have really drastically reduced. And I can get some more accurate numbers as well as what makes up that 137 so we can compare, you know, maybe we had a big expense July 15th that really should have been last year, I don't know that, I'm just saying, but, you know, it would be counted in this year, but, you know, maybe it was for the second half of fiscal year 19. That I don't know 100%, but I could definitely find that out, because, because I do, there's some issues here, I think there really are.
We can compare and see how to compare the past years.
Take a look at it, see where we're at.
Okay.
Especially with, with the move that we've done to Santa Fe to kill that private prison until it houses our county in there.
Right.
That's, that's another problem, I'll address that deal.
All right, well, we'll get some, I'll get some numbers to present to you for further discussion then.
Any further questions on resolution 1660?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to resolution 1662.
Do I make a motion to approve 201660?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Woskis?
Yes.
Councilor Musser?
Thank you.
Thank you for the job you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alrighty. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman, Miss Manager. Uh, before you is, is a contract amendment number three for the services of water, wastewater landscape operations for Jacobs, formerly OMI, then CH2M, Hill, then CH2M. So, uh, we've been ongoing negotiations for some time, there was a silent period of
So we've been ongoing negotiations for some time, there was a silent period of about, I'd say, four months, and so recently, we have the amendments that both parties have agreed on with, with minor final adjustments. And so there's color coding amendments, one and two are noted in blue, additions to the contract are noted in green, and red is noted as deletions, and Laura was kind enough to attach dollar amounts. So the reason for the contract considerations, we had some initial discussions regarding some repairs to water and sewer lines. We all are well aware of the infrastructure needs of our community, and we feel like the repairs crew could be a, a way of staying ahead of the ballgame. So if something breaks, I, I know I showed you all the repair situation where there were multiple repairs within the same vicinity. What our initial idea was, was to expand the repairs instead of being a smaller band-aid, let's repair from stick to stick, 10 foot, 15 foot, 20 foot. Jacobs didn't appear to be receptive to that approach, and, and that was not included in this contract. So the proposed contract amendment for the sewer and water lines for replacement is, is not in this contract, it's only, this is a repair contract exclusively. With that in mind, one of the major deletions is the collection system, the cemetery sewer lines. That's for a variety of reasons, the main being that there is not regular maintenance of the sewer lines. This is done through vector, truck, you, you rod the line and then you suck up at the next manhole and you go and dump at the waste treatment plant, repeat process. This hasn't been performed, you know, in a regular fashion, and it's led to some hydrogen sulfide buildup in our lines, and, and it's eventually causing issues further on down the line. So that's one of the major considerations. Another issue that's not being accomplished, not, not because of Jacobs' fault necessarily, but because we've z-scape some of these areas, MOC grounds, Kiwanis Park, Miracle Park, Station One, Station Two, the skate park, and we have Mary on board that's doing the flower bed. So all of these things that they're no longer doing because we've rotated, we, we've eliminated those. Staffing at the cemetery, there was one full-time employee for a six-month period. We had checked on this FTE for several, several times throughout the season. Tell you truth, I just didn't see.
Can't find him. I couldn't find him either, and I checked on him a lot more times than you guys did.
So, so we eliminated that position because we feel, we feel it wasn't being satisfied. Another issue is the repair fire hydrants. We didn't, we have a system that tracks when the work orders go in, and there's a timeline of 15 days when they should be repaired. We have fire hydrants that are older than 300, one of them's older than 400 days, where the work order is just, they're not getting completed in timely manner. So we've, we've eliminated the repair of fire hydrants also. The cemetery sewer collection systems, as well as lift stations, and the wells would roll over with this amendment to the city of grants. Part of the reason is the water valves, pumps, regular line flushing, and valve maintenance. There's not an adequate system in place, although it's been asked for, for a couple of years. They haven't correctly addressed what the city's needs are. And with aging infrastructure, knowing where our assets are, and how the, being properly maintained is, is obviously important going forward. Another area we'd like to beef up in this contract is insect treatments. When, when you're watering the grass, make sure it's, make sure it's got adequate coverage. Some parts you go to, there's overwatering, and then there's bald spots, and it creates insect issues, and, and so we'd like to beef those areas up. There, the final thing in this contract that, that's addressed is a CPI increase. We're getting away from a CPI, an automatic CPI increase, and we're going to a bonus structure based on performance. And so there's some, there's some lagging performance issues. At the top of my list is the inventory of parts. Part of the contract states that a monthly inspection will be performed with a city employee. That hasn't been done in about nine months, and we're talking about more than $100,000 worth of parts, as well as an annual $125,000 budget. And so potential of, you know, quarter million dollars worth of, worth of parts we're talking about should be checked on regularly, and, and then everyone's got their checks and balances. The other issues that they can earn a bonus is regular supervision in the field by upper management as well as supervision. We feel like with our employees, as well as anyone's employees, the more field supervision, the better quality. So if we see that it brings satisfactory marks, there's a bonus involved. Also, I, I did mention the sprinkler system adjustments and repairs. We feel like one of the things this town has is beautiful parks, and if we maintain them, it increases our quality of life, and we, we feel like the Jacobs staff can definitely get there with, with a little more diligence with, with the sprinkler systems. Safety inspections, related repairs, dog part maintenance, these are all minor things that are all kind of rolled into this bonus structure where they can, where they can gain bonus. So another issue is there was half a body for the waste treatment plant, that was part of the last amendment.
Half a body.
Yeah, 20, 20 hours.
I thought we had a body.
No, no, sorry.
You're doing that, man!
I'm sorry. 20, 20 hours a week employee.
Last time I heard body, we were pulling one out of the river wall.
Sorry about that. 20 hours a week employee for an increase of about $65,000, as well as some extra lab materials, and that hasn't happened since, since the increase last time. And so this is one of the things we'd like to roll in to make sure that when we give adequate money for these employees, they add, they hire the adequate employee.
Instead of pulling them from someplace else to do the job.
So, yes, exactly. I know I've been speaking a lot, and I stand for questions.
Questions? I got, I got a couple, but go ahead.
I do, I, I have this amendment number three, did you say that Jacobs is in agreement with this?
There are very minute changes that Laura and I have made, but because of the timeline, we, we had a three-month dead space, then, sorry, I'll answer your question, not all of it.
Okay. I have, okay, I've, I've sat here, we've been around this, this block a few times already. I have asked for documentation. Never have I received any from anybody in the city, any worker. My personal opinion is, well, we've been at that, but when I was, I went through this and I, I do have some issues because I do understand that the city wants to build their own little department, and I think that's great. But I also, let me give you an example. Across the street from me and to the left is a fire hydrant. If some delightful driver knocks it over and the water is spewing out, I can call Jacobs to have the water turned off. They were not, because of the new one, they will not fix the fire hydrant. Jacobs works about every day, the city has many holidays.
Jacobs has the same days off the city does.
If this happened on a Wednesday evening, and the next day was Thanksgiving, the next day was Friday that the city has off, the next day is Saturday that the city has off, the next day is Sunday that the city has off, when is my water going to be turned on?
As soon as we're done with the repair, just like we are now. Jacobs works exactly the same hours that the city does, Sydney. If I give the city four hours administrative leave, Jacobs gets four hours administrative leave. If we're on a holiday for Good Friday, Jacobs is on a holiday for Good Friday.
But in my time here, if it was Jacobs, or if it was OMI, or if it was CH2M, they responded to me, and the city did not.
That's because of their contract.
Well, yeah, but if they don't, it's not in their contract, they're not the ones that are going.
Because then the city will be taken care of.
And the city is on holiday a lot. Are you going to change that?
Well, they'll be on call, just like Jacobs is, Sydney. I mean.
So the city is not wanting to create our own department, that was the last thing we wanted to do.
Jacobs ain't doing it, damn.
But I keep hearing that Jacobs is doing their job, and you have refused to provide me with any kind of documentation year after year after year.
Are, are you talking about the work orders and arrears?
I'm just talking about something. People walk around with their phones in their faces and don't take a picture. A picture, a little video on your phone, something, but all I get is he said, she said, they said, we said, someone said, or, you know.
How important it is to Jacobs staying even here tonight?
I'm not saying, it's only from the city.
That's how important it is, honey.
Seeing people complaining about them, only the city people, not the people in the community.
Well, I did call.
You don't get no calls from people in the community complaining about Jacobs?
No.
Maybe I ought to give you my phone.
Melissa, how many calls a week do you get every week complaining about something Jacobs has done or not done?
Several calls a week.
Daily.
Daily.
Daily. The water department, I get calls every week.
I get calls every week.
Complaining. I was trying, I was trying not to focus this meeting on the negative. We work closely with Jacobs, I feel like they're family. It breaks my heart for us to be disciplining them in public like you would your children, but I don't feel comfortable as a city manager recommending that we give them more and more money when they're not doing a quality job. And as taxpayers, if you hired, if you hired somebody to come to your house and do your yard, or clean your house, and they did a crappy job, they were, they started an hour late, they, they finished an hour early, they cheated you out of two hours' worth of work, they didn't do a good job, and didn't seem to care, are you going to call them back and give them more money? I don't think so. So with taxpayer dollars, we should treat it the same. We should not, it shouldn't be that I love Edward and he's my friend, and I can say that. I care about Edward, I care about every single one of their employees. We work close, and I know Melissa does, I know Mark does, but if they're not doing their job, we need, we need to say, hey, wait a minute here, they did not bother to even send somebody here tonight, and you know why? Because they know they've got some of you in their pocket, and I'm just going to be, I'm going to be real upfront with that. Why are they not here? I'm, I'm not getting a response from them anymore.
Anything.
When I complain about something, and you know why? Because they know Counselor Vosges supports them, and it doesn't matter what kind of a job. Mark and I are tired of babysitting them. Mark, Mark goes out and he's checking on our crews, Jacobs' crews is standing in the parking lot for an hour before they even get on the road. When I go out, every time I go out to check on my staff, not once have I ever caught them working, not once. And when I've gone to major water leaks on this end of town, I go over there, one guy's working, and there's 10 of them standing there, and the hotel guy comes out, goes, wow, look at our taxpayer doll, and that's like been four or five times. I, you know, Sydney, I, I, I asked Mark, I have a ton of pictures. Michelle and I, Michelle went to the park with me, Michelle and I took 50 pictures of all the bad stuff in all of our parks that aren't being taken care of, and I asked Mark, well, should I show those tonight? I didn't, I don't know, I just, I didn't want to waste any, maybe I should have sent them to you on the side.
Here's what we'll do, we'll table this tonight, we'll bring it back in two weeks at our next meeting. All the calls you've gotten, document them, everything you've got, document them, everything you've got, document them, and that way Fred can be here too, and we make a full decision on this with everybody present. Period.
I agree, but coming back, Laura, you mentioned that I was in their pocket, I am not in their pocket. You're saying I'm taking bribes and I'm not taking bribes.
No, I'm not saying you're taking bribes.
Okay, that's it, you said I was in their pocket, I am not in their pocket.
Did you meet with Counselor Lucero today regarding this contract?
I, Lucero?
You know, we, we've heard of people that you're meeting with on the side over at Chavis Plumbing. I mean, I, I've heard of stuff you're doing on the side, Counselor Vosges, and they, they know that they don't have to convince you, and, and that's sad to me because I'm not going to, it's not very much fun for me to sit here and say they're not doing a good job.
Well, here's, here's what I've got to deal with this, okay? I've been, I've been here longer than anybody, I've been dealing with these guys longer than anybody. They've got a sweetheart contract, and they've had a sweetheart contract for years, they've never been held accountable, and everybody knows it. Now we're finally trying to hold them accountable. Period. By adjusting their contract to crap that they do not do. And here's one of those many things that just pisses me off, that I still didn't get out of this contract, okay? And a lot of them, 30 gallons per vehicle, per gas, we will pay for. Do we pay TLC's gas? Do we give them 40 gallons of gas per car?
I don't know.
No, we don't. We don't do that for anybody else, but we do it for Jacobs.
That's a fact that you guys signed years ago.
Years ago, but, I mean, every time it comes back up, it's still there, honey, why?
Well, why didn't you address it? Why didn't you address it before?
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to do here, the whole dam contract, and fix the whole thing, not just the 30 gallons of gas, because compared to the others, if you look at all the numbers that are in there, 30 gallons of gas per vehicle is nothing.
Okay, I'm, I'm not worried near that. So the other thing is, yes, I support OMI, I've seen them work, they've been, to me, they've been, they've been really courteous to the people, and they work really hard. Now, if there's an issue with Jacobs between you and them, and you've been trying to get rid of them, I said, if you want to.
This is cops are happy.
You want that contract, you know, and you.
No, and I've wanted it for so long.
Okay, so they've already read this, and they signed it, right? So do you want to go over the contract?
They haven't signed it.
They haven't signed it yet?
They haven't signed it.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying. So we'll wait, get your documentation together, every time somebody's called you, you too, get your pictures together, make sure the entire council gets a copy of all of this crap, instead of just me. Make sure they all get a copy of this crap.
I would like to have.
In two weeks, we'll bring it back, and we'll address this contract there.
And if you can prove to me that I'm not doing the harm.
You watch, buddy.
I, I don't want to overstep, you know, facts. Who's, if you are doing some kind of negotiation with someone, it would be better to have someone that is not so loud.
Oh, come on, Sydney, I was elected to do this. It doesn't matter how loud I am, whether you like it or not, those are the facts, you know.
I'm talking about the discussion with Jacobs.
I haven't been involved in the discussion with Jacobs at all, Sydney.
Probably good.
Well, probably it's good that I'm elected as the mayor and not you. That's probably a very good thing.
It probably is.
We, we have not argued with Jacobs.
Gee, man, you gotta give me, how many votes you get? Explains tons.
Sydney, or Counselor Reynolds, we seem to agree on the, the contract you have before us. They sent, two weeks ago, they sent me a final draft, they had added in a bunch of stuff that we hadn't agreed on initially, I took that out, and a lot of it was geared towards stuff that the city was going to do. Well, this is a contract with us, with you, people are not going to tell us what our part is. We're going to tell you what we need you to do, and we don't need to have, there was like 20 items in there of what the city was going to do. Well, that, that was unnecessary. That was the only thing I took out. They had an odd number, which you hate, you know, an odd number for what we were going to pay them, I put it right to $225,000 was what we were taking out, because it was like some $698, and I was like, yeah, we don't need to deal with that, we've already had that, but they, it seems like they've agreed. Unfortunately, their two main guys were going to be in Utah, I let them know that it was going to be on this meeting, they knew the last meeting, the mayor said I wanted them.
They knew the last meeting, the mayor said I won it on the next meeting. They have other representatives they could have had here tonight. And it makes me worry, why are they not here? They obviously feel pretty confident that they're, because I'll tell you, in years past, when their contract was on the line, there were ten of them here. The whole crew was here. Why are they not here tonight?
Nobody.
They obviously are very confident that they know how to decide if they're going to vote.
I make a motion to table this.
Second. I want to say aye.
Aye.
There it is, table for two weeks. Comments from the council, Sidney?
Actually, I do have some comments, Sissy.
This is America.
Yeah, this is America. No, it doesn't have to do with any of this stuff. Many years ago, there was overprowding at the shelter. I got together with Rebecca Anderson and her assistant, Sissy, and I established a spay-neuter program for the people of Grants. And a little application was advertised in the vegan, it was vegan at that time. I could afford to pay for one spay and two neuters a month. All the person had to do was fill out the little piece of paper, send it to me. I took it over to Sissy. The individual made their appointment, took their dog or cat in, picked them up when they were done. And I followed afterwards and paid the bill. This program lasted less than a year because the people of Grants did not want to have their dogs or cats spayed or neutered. Or they did not want me to pay their bill. And then fast forward, I ran for the seat. I didn't want to be salaried. Not because I'm an angel, but because it created too much money for me. I fought that. I figured since the city council instituted salaries, the city council votes on their own raises. If I was a city council member, I could opt out. Okay, so I couldn't. I still feel very strongly about that. I have received comments about if people aren't paid, they do not get good people. Well, our state senators and representatives aren't salaried. Are they not good people? So that really does bother me. It's very hurtful. And what is even more hurtful is I receive zero support from anyone in this community. Then we move on to, oh, what am I going to do with the money? The sidewalk repair fund. Use my salary to pay for people's sidewalks. Your sidewalk is your responsibility. Oh, what happened? Almost four years, people did not want their sidewalk repaired at no cost to themselves.
That was only in your district though, because I told you I would take mine.
That was just my district.
I told you I'd take mine, darling.
While I was doing that, I made a mistake of getting involved in a community project. The community project is still not done because they don't want to take, I could have funded the entire thing. They didn't want me to. They want to do it their way. They want to have community involvement. They want to get, go to Diamond G and beg for materials, go to NAPA, go to Sign FX. When there's someone that could have just got it taken care of.
What community project is this one?
The interior of the caboose.
Oh, okay.
Okay, as soon as I paid for the electricity, I was not invited to participate any longer. You know what? Rest assured that I will not do anything anymore. I am on a sabbatical. I will not contribute my money to this community at all. And you know what? I don't even like you people. Second thing is, I'd like to say thank you to Tri-West. The Tri-West, they did a nice letter in The Citizen, a letter to the editor about their responsibility and what they decided. So they did, I appreciated that for kind of letting people off the hook. I also would like to say to the individuals who had the town hall meeting, when people find out, they're not going to have a job. When they find out, all this stuff is going to have to get upset. And a town hall meeting is a good place for them to vent. So I appreciate the individuals that attended and let people vent on them. And I think that's about it.
Manny?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Rick?
Yeah, you know, I'm good too, so.
Well, Sidney, I'm sorry you don't like people in this town because I still like you anyway.
Yeah, in your dreams.
No, in my heart. I mean, I don't agree with you. You're way too liberal for me. You want to do away with some of my liberties. So I have a problem with those things. Just like I do with the governor that wants to get away with some of my liberties. Okay? But that's another ballgame. As far as that letter from Tri-State today, I think it's just another lie like they told Clemente when they told him that they'd keep it open for ten years if he voted. So that's what I think about that. The job losses here, I need you guys to call the senators, your legislators and the governor and tell them to give us a refinery. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to take up all these plastics that everybody's complaining about and put them in a nice little refinery and make natural gas out of it? Man, that would be cool, wouldn't it? And then we wouldn't have all that stuff in the ocean. We wouldn't have plastic bags everywhere because everybody can pick them up to give them to the City of Grants. But that's another story completely. They don't want us to do anything. And here's my question, and I even asked it on the radio today. I'd really like to know why the people in the valley, just like you, hate us so much? All we do is work for them. The people that want to close our prisons, the ones that...
What valley?
The valley, the Rio Grande Valley. You know, the only valley we have in New Mexico? The Rio Grande Valley, Santa Fe, Albuquerque and Las Cruces. That's called the valley. I guess you've been here very long, huh?
Only twenty-three years.
Well, not long enough to know where the valley is. But anyway, that being said, I mean, when you got them people over there in the valley putting out deals to stop all drilling, all fracking, to close all private prisons, wow, why do they hate the rural communities so much? That would be my only question to the state. Okay, because everything that they've done is killing jobs in the rural communities. Not in those big cities, just out in the rural communities. Why? Because we're the ones that actually work for a living? We're the ones that actually do something that generates the money for this state? Especially our education? And all this money that she's spending now, just going crazy with, giving raises here and adding new departments there? When she's done killing all these jobs and killing the oil and gas industry, how are we going to pay for anything? But nobody thinks about any of that. They don't see that. All they do is vote to get along with the party. And you see what that got Clemente? It got him primaried by a progressive, even though he went along with the party. Because the Democratic Party is not the party no more. It's the Progressive Party. They've overrun us, they've overtaken this party. Okay, there's more moderates than there are progressives. But a lot of them are like Sidney that say, well, why the hell do I want to get in there and put up with that crap? So as our jobs go down and new elections are coming, all I can tell you is make sure the person that you're voting for is going to do the job and not kill the jobs. Not take your liberties, not defy the Constitution. And that's what I've got to say tonight. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting now.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Second. I want to say aye. Have a good night.